Good evening. Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for August 26, 2014. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart present.
Colin McNamara present. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being tape recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. 2.1, request to continue without testimony. Is that a deletion?
Well, it's not really deletion.
Oh, it's the continuation of the...
It's the continuation of the poll petition, and I can explain.
When we get to that.
Now or when we get to it.
Okay. And then add 3.10 something from Mr. Kukula.
Yeah, it's a contract.
Okay. All righty. Approval of meeting minutes. Did you have any?
Yeah, I actually went through, like we talked the last time, I got three of the meetings done. I think Karen did the rest of them, so that's fine. The only thing I did have to say is, I noticed we're putting on there that the attachments can be seen online, and that's fine, but for permanent record's sake, they should still be attached to the minutes and sent downstairs because, you know, we might not have our website forever. But other than that, I can make a motion to approve them all. Do you want to do them all at the same time?
Sure.
Except for the executive session?
Right.
Okay. I would move to approve the meeting minutes for May 20, 2014, June 3, 2014, June 17, 2014, June 25, 2014, July 1, 2014, July 7, 2014, July 15, 2014, and July 31, 2014.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the executive session minutes for June 17, 2014, and July 1, 2014.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.1, continuation of public hearing on petition of Unitil and Verizon to install two utility poles on Bootle Road, beginning at pole number one and continuing approximately 345 feet northerly. And this is something that we're going to be, continue the hearing, Andy?
Yes, I met out on the site today with Jim D. from Unitil. And I know, Colin, from talking to you, that you had been out there and had seen how tree-lined that way is. So they don't have a clear shot now to get from the existing poles to the West property. So they need to work out an arrangement with probably a lease or rather an easement with the Wests and work out the proper route on the road. So they've asked for a month continuation so that they can work with the two parties.
Do we have a date to continue it to?
Yeah, to the 23rd.
Did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing till, I'm sorry, what was that date again?
September 23rd.
Till September 23 at 7:05.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.2, Council on Aging Director Ed Snap, Chairman of the Screening Committee, will be present to discuss the recruitment of a COA Director. Welcome.
Thank you. We're actually in pretty good shape. I feel pretty good about what's been going on. We've been doing due diligence here. As you can see, we've got part of the board here. And I believe we can do this because we have found some funding that's already in place, in existence. And that would be the formula grant. And we can use that money based on what we've gotten from Emmett, from the state.
From the Office of Elder Affairs.
Okay. Claire Devine, who used to hold this spot, the volunteer coordinator, and she has, you know, left. So that frees that up. This is only, this money that can be available will take us through the fiscal year, fiscal year 2015 here. And that will put the amount that can be given to the, for wages for the director's spot up in the ballpark of the one person that we want to be here, which is Kimberly Dee, all right? And it puts us right there in the ballpark. If we take some of this funding that's there and move it in and let her work on having that position dispersed between two other individuals or re-delegate that. So that makes this available. This is only a Band-Aid, though, because it's not, it is not a guarantee, although we have been getting this grant almost, what, how many years?
Probably years.
So it's been, it's there. So we found some funding.
How much are you, what's the salary with the current, the budget amount and?
And this?
Yeah.
It brings it right up to around 45, 45.
Okay.
Now, Kimberly Dee, I'm not exactly sure what she's making. She is at present on holiday per week. Both Dave Prophet and Andy Sheehan have been talking to her. And she still wants the position. But the idea was to bring this level up to her ballpark, even put it in the ballpark for her.
But you haven't had a chance to speak to her?
Personally, no.
Or is that, I mean, is...
Well, I would just, I would just add to that, that I, my last conversation with her before she went on holiday was that she would, when she returned, she would get back to me. I told her what we were looking to do. She's familiar with the formula grant and how that all works and then the ability to be able to give some of that money into salaries. However, and she realizes that that's just a Band-Aid, and it's something that's going to have to be worked out in the coming fiscal year to take a close look at that salary range and the budget and reexamine that whole situation. But however, so she was actually going to give us an answer when she returned.
Okay.
So it's still a little uncertainty whether or not she's, you know, going to be agreeable to these terms or not. But we can suggest that, and then she can work out any other further negotiations with Andy and move forward from there if it were to go in that direction. So, but that, but based on my conversations with the Office of Elder Affairs and maybe to be able to utilize a proportion of money that had been earmarked for something else, but based on what Ed and I have looked at and the rest of the committee here with relative to how it would affect the organization as a whole by eliminating this particular volunteer coordinator's position for a period of this fiscal year, I think with a little bit of delegation, we might be able to make it work. And it would also increase the hours from 35 to 40 hours a week.
Okay.
So that this would bring the, that was, that was the other component of this, was to get that to 40 hours a week at the $45,000 range. And to enable, you know, I just got the stare eye from Andy, but that was the, but that was the idea, so that those extra five hours would, you know, enable the position to be able to deal with some of those other duties that were going to be neglected.
Okay.
So the grant money has already been applied for and received, and we have it in the account? Or is this something you need to apply?
Well, Chris had just applied for the grant prior to her leaving.
So it's just in process?
And it's in process, so it actually worked out perfectly. When I talked to him at Smarzo on Friday, he said that, you know, he was more than happy to work with us and be accommodating any way he could. So he sent me back the forms to fill out. I just have to work out a few details with him, Ed and I, and Valerie will work on that. And we'll see where it takes us, you know, in the next couple of weeks. And I'll, you know, sit down with Andy on it, too, because there's a couple of budget questions I have with Andy when we get to that point.
Well, that was one of my questions. Have you talked to Kim to see if that can be appropriated for salaries for the director?
Well, it's not up to Kim. It's up to the Office of Elder Affairs. And they've agreed that that could happen. So, you know, the money we'd get would come to the town, but however, it would be up to them. They dictate whether that money can be spent, so.
Just supplemental hours.
See, right now, people have really come together, both Linda Salisbury, all the volunteers that are there, and Donna Fenton. So everybody's chipping in and really doing it. It's working. But it's still, it has become a little, you know, stressful, I mean, for those. And I had to make a few promises that I've gotten some insurance that it would work, that it'll happen. And also, hopefully, we had this issue come up, but hopefully, we can get at the files we need to continue the...
Your computer system hasn't been straightened out yet?
It was, it's in the process, as I understand it.
Will it be straightened out by tomorrow, Andy?
I hope so. Yep, that's what I expect.
What's the issue?
Melissa has taken some time off this week, so she hasn't been available to get over there, but she'll be around tomorrow.
Andy, the question I have is if this, say, you know, you've gotten this grant for many years, correct?
Correct.
And say, just we didn't get it one year, do we have the flexibility in the budget to fully fund that position? I'm not talking about this year. I'm talking about in the future.
Yeah, and I think there's a couple of ways to look at this. I think having the grant available is a good fallback. And depending on how things unfold in the next couple of months before town, fall town meeting, we may want to look at going to town meeting with a supplemental budget appropriation so that we have the foundation this year, you know, so that we're at 100% of the salary for this year, and then for next year, we're just whatever the, you know, whatever the increase is. Otherwise, we're, you know, it's still a little bit, a little bit tenuous. I happen to think town meeting will go along with it because it's been, it's been supportive in the past of similar changes that have been supportive, supportive of social services in the past, like the senior center. So I think that they'll go along with it. But you're right, there is always that uncertainty of whether the grant will remain. But we would have, for this year, we would have flexibility because of some savings that we realized in some of their spending articles, but we'd need a town meeting article to move money.
I would just suggest that that, that's actually a very good suggestion. You wouldn't get no argument from us if we were to bring it to the town floor in October or whenever a town meeting is set. But we'd also suggest that the grant should not be used to fund this position at all in the future. This is just a mechanism.
Right. That's kind of where I was going with that as well.
You know, we, you know, when we discussed at the last meeting, we're like, well, okay, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to make the job contingent on a potential increase in head town meetings. So this just gets us over that hurdle between now and then. But if we can deal with it at the fall town meeting, that would be, that would be great.
That's what I would want to do. I'd want additional appropriation at the fall. We have another salary account that's going to be short as well. But you do have that grant money to offer the position. And then let her get in and take a look at the budgets and figure out how she wants to operate the senior center, and we can incorporate those things.
And she could put in, she could put it in for fiscal '16, you know?
Right. Because we brought, we brought it to the attention of the Office of Elder Affairs that if this could happen, that there were a funding mechanism at the fall town meeting, that they're very flexible. So even in midstream, we could go in and change that grant around, and that could be, and that money could be used back to what it was originally used for.
Just gives Ms. Dee the security of knowing that we're committed to funding that position and getting the...
So...
And then once she's in place, think about it, she's working on the next year's budget, so.
Exactly. And she might, you know, want to move some money around within the budget, you know, who knows? It'll be a process.
So right now, we're just waiting here once she's back from vacation.
So I guess what I would ask is table it for this week, you know, and then we'll get back. I think she's coming back next week. Does she?
I think she is.
When's her next?
It's Monday, next week.
I'm pretty sure it's Monday.
The meeting is scheduled for the 9th.
The 9th. Okay. We'll table it till the 9th, then.
One other thing, if I could, Colin.
Yep.
In the memo that I, that I included in the board's packet this week, in addition to the salary, I mentioned other benefits that may have to be a consideration, not just for this position, but for similar positions going forward. Right now, the way that our personnel rules are structured, you basically start, you could come in here with 20 or 30 years of experience, but you have, you come in at no benefits, essentially. That becomes a challenge in the recruitment end of things. So if there's, if the board has some flexibility in terms of especially vacation, leave, I think that would be helpful in this case and in other cases as well. Certainly, Ms. Dee is going to be giving up some accrued vacation at her current employer. And so that's, that's always a often a sticking point. So I don't necessarily need a commitment of anything specific tonight, but if there is flexibility on the part of the board in that regard, it would be helpful in negotiating with her.
Well, just where I'm coming from on that issue, I read the memo, and I agree that you do need some flexibility with benefits for department heads. But the rules have to be the same for department heads and employees, and I don't like making exceptions for one or another. I think that gets you into trouble. The other, the other thing that I was thinking about is personal contracts, because that's how a lot of department heads receive an additional benefit package versus your mainstream employees. And in the law, usually you're authorized to make one with the police chief or the town administrator. What we did with the building commissioner and with the highway superintendent, because that wasn't authorized by law, is we had town meeting vote to approve to allow, in this case, it would be maybe the Council on Aging, in conjunction with the Board of Selectment, a personal contract for, for the COA Director. I would have no issue with that. But I would have an issue with making different rules for different folks coming in, because we have department heads like our town accountant. And, you know, they, they had to start at the beginning. So that's where I'm coming from on that. Not that I'm not open to either changing the personnel rules to reflect department heads versus employees or personal contracts.
Well, what's, we're going to take this?
I just wanted to put it out there. That's my thoughts on it.
So we'll, we'll discuss it on the 9th and see where we stand and see how Ms. Dee feels about the, about that salary. Sound good?
That sounds, that sounds a lot better. And now we, we seem to be pretty much on the same page, you know, because it's, I really didn't want to go back to the well. And if I was going to go back to the well, then I was going to have the listing changed and cleaned up so that it reflected the salary as it stands now, which is not competitive at all.
I agree.
You know, and...
It's just unfortunate that it's kind of midway through the, you know, it's after the budgets are done. It's after we've already, so it's something that, this is a good Band-Aid.
Yeah.
It's a great idea to bridge the gap till next year.
Right. I like the idea of presenting it, at least putting it up for the fall town meeting. But I still think that you're going to get the response that you want in the spring, because everybody's budgets are all going to go in. And she would have time, excuse me, she would have time to be working on the budget and putting it in, you know? I think that that's, I think those are positive, and I feel good about that.
Good. I just wanted to express how grateful I am for, especially Mr. Snap over there every day and trying to figure things out. We're very, we're very fortunate to have folks like all of you working so hard.
No, no. The thing is, we've got really good volunteers here.
Yes, you do.
And they're working. They're the ones that are working. I'm just walking in there eyes on, you know, I got my coffee in my hand. I'm not doing, you know, I'm just moral support, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
They're doing a great job. They're all there.
Well, thank you.
Other than that.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
And we'll, we'll put this on the next agenda for an update and see where things are going. You have my blessing on it. No support at going to town meeting in the fall.
Great. Good.
Awesome.
This works for me.
Ooh, happy new year.
And you.
Yes.
2.3. We are a little bit late, not much. Chief Boynton, come on down. Fire EMS Chief Mark Boynton to discuss on-call pay.
Mr. Chairman, I gave you a memo, but I'll give you a brief explanation and answer any questions you may have. We have, essentially have a gap in coverage, speaking of volunteers with the past talks that you discussed. As you, as you may know, our firefighters, paid-on-call firefighters are essentially a type of volunteer. They get paid, so they're not volunteers, but they get paid when they respond. So the gap that we have is nights and weekends and holidays in particular, when the full-time staff are not there. We really don't know who's going to show up. And the simple solution to that is to have somebody on duty or on-call, not in the...
So scheduled on-calls.
Right. Scheduled on-call is probably an excellent description of that. Somebody that's expected to be in town and be available and respond, and with the knowledge and authority to make decisions. So typically, it's pretty customary in towns of this size to have a scheduled duty officer or, as you said, somebody responsible to show up. So I've discussed this several times with the officers of the department, the captains and lieutenants and the deputy chief. And after a couple of events this summer where on the weekends we really didn't have many people show up for a call, and the ones that showed up were relatively new, which makes me, as a chief, nervous, but made my fellow officers nervous, not knowing that if we had a major event, if anybody was going to show up that, you know, had the authority to make sound decisions, we agreed that we should transition to this on-call or on-call shift, so to speak, for the officers, which essentially, they take a week, you know, we're on a five-week rotation. So this week, Deputy John Elliott may be on-call. And for that week, what I need your permission to do is use existing funds within the budget to pay them essentially a $1 per hour standby fee. So it ended up being $100 per week.
That had always been in existence. How long ago did we, we always had scheduled on-call time, and they got $1 an hour?
Yeah, my understanding is not, I haven't seen any record of it. I asked when I became the, when I became the chief three months ago, if this was something that we had tried. And the officers had told me it was something that they tried in the past. They were never paid for it, so they refused.
And we're always paid the $1 an hour back on the papers. That's how we had ambulance coverage. The only issue...
Maybe way back in the day of the Hamilton. I think this is relatively recently.
Maybe since they merged, they did away with it. That could very well be...
I think this was within the last couple of years, maybe seven or eight years ago they had done it.
Yeah, maybe it was before they merged, because that's how we had always done it. The only, the only issue that I see, Chief, is your union firefighters, because there's no authorization in the union contract to pay them in the additional amount. I absolutely agree that you should have a duty officer charge, especially if you're not going to be available or, you know, so I absolutely support that. I've got no problems with, and I'm not sure what the ground rules would be, trying to negotiate that into the contract to cover any of your, your full-timers that might take on that responsibility. I don't want to penalize them for not taking on responsibility. But I'm not sure if we have the authorization to do that.
Well, we would have to negotiate it. You're right. We would have to negotiate this into the contract. It's not in their contract now. And, and it does raise some fair labor standards issues. There have been some cases where the on-call, or there's one notorious case, a well-known case, where the on-call pay had not been factored into the overtime rate.
The overtime, and we went through that, actually, in '05 or '06.
So we do have to be careful in that regard. If it's just the non-union folks, it's not an issue. And if the, if the union folks want to partake in that, then we would have to negotiate that.
Yeah, we went through, I'm sorry.
Do you imagine it will be mostly just the on-call?
There would be one union member.
Okay.
Which has agreed to the terms with me. Understandably, needs to be negotiated, but is acceptable of the terms and has already been on-call.
Carol?
Yeah, just, just to go back to what Andy said, that's, we went, we got into that situation years ago where we weren't calculating in the on-call pay into the overtime rate. So that's something you're going to have to review every six months to a year to be sure that we're, we are complying, that's up, you know? But yeah, I thought it was always still in place. I haven't been involved that much in the last few years. But you do want to have people on-call.
Absolutely.
If it's already, Andy, if it's already been an existing practice, it just hasn't been practiced in the last few years, do we really, do we need to vote on it if it's already?
Yeah, we do. Talking with Kim Fails, she needs some sort of an authorization from the board in order to, in order to process payment for, for individuals taking advantage of this. So otherwise, it's just, because it's a, the practice was discontinued.
Okay.
And it sounds like it might have been prior to the merger, so it might have been just on the EMS side.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they did on that.
So it's kind of a, it's a, it's potentially a slightly different animal. So I think it's, the cleanest thing is for the board to approve it for non-union. And then if, if the union wants to participate, then we would have to negotiate it into their contract or as an amendment to their contract.
What they used to have, and what they used, the fire department used to submit, or ambulance department used to submit to us, Fire, too, is calendars every month showing the on-call blocks that people have taken. And we do need to be careful about what you're outlining in a policy or in a description as to what they have to do to be on-call. We don't want to restrict them too much. Are you running the Fair Labor Standards Act? And it's been a while since I looked at it. So I don't know if you still have an existing policy over there. I know you did at one time.
I can look. I mean, I have some policies that I've used in the past.
Yeah, so we definitely want to put a policy into place so that Kim has that for authorization. But I mean, I have no issues aside of the, the union people. I think it's, it only makes sense that you know who's going to be showing up.
Right. And understandably, just so we're clear, they get paid their hourly wage, wait, hourly rate, hourly rate when they do respond.
When they respond, yes.
So this is the standby. If we do have a call, they get paid their hourly rate, and in some cases, maybe overtime.
You mean that they're not going to work for a dollar?
No, no. And actually, they used to pay out every six months, so it'd be a little Christmas bonus and then a little summer vacation bonus, is how. But you'd want to ask Kim how she wants it. She might want it to be monthly or...
Yeah, we, my intent is to process it weekly.
Process it weekly, that's fine, too. It makes everything cleaner. But I know before they liked that little extra check.
Any FSLA issues with...
Yeah. Yeah, so if you could work on a policy, you know, that would be great, or use the existing. It's been years since I read it, but...
And Colin, if I could just jump in one, one slight addition to the response to your prior comment, we didn't have the union in the past.
Yes.
So now, now that we've got the union, that sort of changes the playing field a little bit, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So basically, I'm going to make a motion to approve payment of a, would be a dollar on-call time for all non-union personnel. And part of that is to get a policy together, you know, for us to review and approve, if that's okay. All right, so I would move to approve the request of Fire Chief, Chief Boynton, to have on-call pay at $1 per hour for all non-union employees in the Fire EMS department.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea.
In his letter, the chief said that...
Get back to you.
He asked for the money. Thank you. The money would come from his existing budget. But if you put it in place for the entire rest of the year, will you have enough money in your budget?
Yeah, at $100 per hour for the nights and weekends, we're talking $5,000 for the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's for one person, one officer to be on-call tonight, tomorrow night, through the weekend. At $1 an hour, it ends up being $5,200.
Great. Thank you.
It's $1 an hour, Ann, or $100 a week.
Yeah, we have $100 on time, how many people you have on-call.
Not $100 an hour.
3.1, review and approve staffing plan for Treasurer Collector's Office. Andy?
So after our, I guess it was our meeting, our last meeting, we talked about staffing down in the Treasurer Collector's Office. We've talked about it a couple of times. We talked about it back in June, I think it was, when we brought forth the appointment for the, for the payroll clerk. And we've talked about the, all of the changes going on down in the, in the Treasurer Collector's Office. And so I put together the staffing plan that's laid out on the, in the memo that's in front of you. Beth Anne Scheid and Kate, Stacy are both here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
In case there are any, any questions. But as I've mentioned in the past, what we've come to realize and didn't fully appreciate in the past was that, when Kathy Rosbeck was here, she was getting by, really with, with substandard staffing for the activity that goes on down in that, down in that office. And so we've tried to address that. We've taken our time doing this. We've been, we've been meeting about this on a pretty regular basis to try to figure out the best, the best way to, to do this. And we think we've come up with a, with a pretty fair proposal that is reflective of the staffing needs in the department and also fiscally responsible. So what we're, what we're recommending is a formal consolidation of the treasurer-collector position. Right now, when, when Kathy was here, she was the elected collector and appointed treasurer. For the last year or so, we've been operating with separate part-time treasurer and collector. There's a benefit in having a single combined position, benefit for staff oversight and continuity in the department and, and staffing at the, throughout the day, which is one of the, one of the benefits that, that we had when Kathy was here. And I think it's a, I think it's an important one that, that we try to restore. So a full-time treasurer-collector, and a, and a position, this is not a position that's classified in our comp and class plan, so I would recommend that we send this out to HRS for an evaluation and have them slotted into the, into the position classification.
Keep talking, Andy. I was just going to turn it off.
Okay. And then, and that would give us a, a baseline salary as well for the position. The assistant treasurer-collector, which has been held for the last couple of years by Rebecca Hershey, we're not really proposing any, any changes to that. The arrangement, the staffing plan that we have would, would allow Rebecca to step away from the collections desk and do some of the higher-level duties in the office, which we think are important for, for getting us on track to where we, to where we need to be. And then there are two part-time or lesser-time positions. A 30-hour position that, at this point, we're calling department assistant, but we, you know, can sort of play around with, with what you want to call it. That would be a person that's at the collections desk, also doing payroll and, and performing other similar tasks in the, in the department. Proposing that at, at this point at, at 30 hours. If we stick with that title, that position exists on the, on the compensation and classification plan. And then the position of payroll clerk would be, would be eliminated, be rolled into that department assistant position. And then finally, a collections clerk that we're looking at as approximately an 18-hour position, non-benefited position, primarily would work at the counter, taking in collections, posting collections, performing-
At the busy times.
At the busy times, correct. Yep. And, and so that person, you know, on, on payroll days, that, the, the collections clerk would be at the desk to free up the, the department assistant to work on payroll and things like that. But there are periods of the year where we would need both of them. There are periods of the year where, where we would need either both of them or one of them and the assistant treasurer-collector at the desk, just because of the volume coming Part and parcel with all of this, we've talked a lot over the, the last couple of months about the, about the lockbox service that we've implemented, and so that should help in the long term. In terms of a transition, Beth Anne has, has offered to stay on and provide some, some transition and some oversight as we, as we move forward. Stay on through, maybe through the winter, depends, would depend on Kate's comfort level or, we're, I should say, I should be perfectly frank. We're expecting that Kate would be the, would be the person that would take this position, but obviously, we would be, we would be posting it, so. But there would be a transition period, and Beth Anne has offered to, to help us through that. And then there would be some minor changes to the office layout down there. The counter that we have there now is not sufficient for, really for more than one person, so we would do some, some minor adjustments to that. It would work with, with all of the staff in the treasurer-collector and assessor's office to make sure that-
Inexpensive changes, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it would be stuff that we could do, we could do in-house with Mark and available staff.
Andrea?
In regards to payroll, did anybody look into the cost of a payroll service?
Well, we have a payroll service now. We use Harper's Payroll. But somebody has to process it on, on our end and send it off to them.
Data entry.
So it is, it is largely automated, but some of it, some of it still falls on us. One other thing, I'm glad you actually brought that up. One of the things that, that we would be looking at, and it's something that we would have to talk to the employees about and particularly talk to the, to the union groups about, is a, is going to a bi-weekly payroll. Some of them have already agreed to that. Some of the, the union groups have agreed to that. But that would, that would free up some time, going from 52 weeks of pay to 26 weeks of pay, would free up some time for that, for that clerical position to work on other stuff.
The only thing on the, the five-weekly pay, which is, is, I think mostly, I, you know, it's up to them, I feel, that one way or the other about it. But vacation, if they're going to go on vacation, could they get the pay lost schedule?
Well, that raises a different issue. We've never adopted the statute that allows people to be paid in advance of their vacation.
Okay.
We actually have that, I have that in my folder for, for this town meeting.
We just did it for years.
What's that?
We just did it that way for years.
Well, I think it has been done occasionally, but we do have it as a potential warrant article for this fall, fall town meeting. Independent of this, I hadn't actually thought about that, that wrinkle of, of somebody being on vacation and how their, their vacation gets processed, so. But that's, that's one of the things that we need to talk about as well.
Carol?
Yeah, a couple of issues. One, I read the staffing plan, and by, we passed the legislation, Andy, the article, what we did was that we just made the elected tax collector and appointed tax collector. We didn't combine the positions.
Correct.
So I really believe that it kind of triggers section 5.1 of the town charter, because we're actually doing kind of a merging of, of it down there and a re, a reconsolidation, a reorganization of that. It's just a procedure, it's just a process, but that's something to keep out. Then the other issue that I had is with HRS sending it back out to them, because I pulled the original email with the original paperwork, and she did go through, she did it separately, and then she did it together. So that, that has already been done. We should have that job description somewhere. And the town treasurer-tax collector, she had the minimum and the average in the proposed. But in also regards to HRS, I suppose that would go on to maybe the goals talk, but I really don't want to have lifelong relationship with them. We bought a program in which you have weighted scores, and you can calculate to figure out where you put people on the different grades, and it's a pretty simple process. We did it here for years. The personnel board did it with a very similar program through MMA, so, not that that has anything to do with your staffing plan. But I got this Friday, and being the general government rep, I was kind of surprised I wasn't brought in in the conversations, but I did get a chance to talk to Groton and Lunenburg, and so I'd like some more time to evaluate what the other communities do before deciding to completely, you know, redoing, redo the-
I expect, I, I was thinking that we should table this until Sue's here as well.
That's the other part.
Because I, you know, especially a change like this, I'm just, I'm, I personally am not comfortable without the full board present.
Yeah, and that makes sense. Certainly, I'd prefer to have the full board's support behind this.
Yeah, if you want to check in, Andy, and see if we have to follow that process, that would be great.
Yeah, I looked at that, and I, and I, I don't think that that's triggered here, because that, if I can find it. That really contemplates a, something like going in the direction of, of a Department of Public Works or something like that, if you're doing a, a broad reorganization of, of the, of the structure.
Well, I mean, we're doing quite a few changes down there, and we're, and we're combining two jobs that have always been separate, so.
Right, but there is a bylaw that says that the, the selectmen can appoint the, the collector as the treasurer, so I think it's, you know, I think it's similar.
I'll look into it for, like I said, I just got this Friday, and-
Yeah, I mean, I can-
It's kind of hard to do all this research in two days.
I can reach out to town council if you'd like-
Yeah, just a quick phone call, see if he thinks it's triggered in.
All right. We all done?
So I have no problem tabling this to the next?
Table it till the ninth. I mean, I feel like we're going to be saying that a lot tonight. All righty.
Yeah, I, I like the full board for some of these discussions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Beth Anne. Kate?
3.2. Review and approve Chapter 90 reimbursement request for Hamilton Hill Road in the amount of $10,212.32.
This is a project that was completed earlier, I forget if it was earlier this year or late last year, but has, all the work has been done. This is just to submit our, our funding reimbursement request. Hamilton Hill, for, if you don't know where it is, it's the last road on the left as you're heading west towards Ashmead off 119.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's almost, you blink and you miss it.
Easy to go past, yep.
Okay, so I would move to approve the Chapter 90 reimbursement request for Hamilton Hill Road in the amount of $10,212.32.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to table 3.3? Does Sue already want to do that?
Just going to stay for a second. Uh, hang on one sec. Um, wait, did I sign here too? Sorry. I mean, I suppose we could at least discuss it, maybe not make the, make the decision.
Yeah, what we're trying to do this year, and, and maybe it's, maybe it's not as critical, when I started to look at the, at the schedule for potential town meeting dates, I had the, the council on aging position in mind and the, and the budget, supplemental budget appropriation in mind for that, and I thought it would be beneficial if we could move town meeting up. We've been doing it the last few years in mid-November, 15th, 19th, in that range. The first year that I was here, we did it in October, which I personally liked, and I think in some ways is, is easier on people's schedule, you're further away from the holidays. The other thing, this year, we've got two elections, so the clerk's office has two elections that they have to, have to be worried about. One on September 9th, and that's the primary, and the other one on November 4th, I believe it is, which is the general state election. So we don't want to be too close to either of those dates. I did talk to Kathy Spofford, and she would be okay with, with October 21 or anywhere in that, in that week. The 21st is a, is a scheduled selectman's meeting night. It's not a holiday week, it's the week after Columbus Day, and would work, I think would work pretty well. We expect that we'll have free cash by that time. If the board is comfortable setting that as at least a soft date, I'd like to-
Yeah, I'd be happy to, though again, open the warrant, get people thinking about what they need.
Yeah, you know, it's, you think, oh, it's, it's only August, but, you know, it's really only four weeks or so away, so I'd like to at least give people some, some notice that we can get some, get articles in.
The more time we know, have potential warrant articles, the better we can be prepared. So I would move to set the, do you want me to set the date or tentatively set the date?
Why don't we say tentative?
I would move to tentatively set the date for the fall special town meeting to October 21st and open the warrant-
Second.
Or submission of warrant articles, sorry.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. 3.4. Update on FY15 capital borrowing.
Just a, not much to talk about here, just wanted to let you know that I'm going to let the departments know that they can go ahead and commence ordering the equipment that's on the capital plan. We've gotten the go-ahead from, from our bond council on the, on the capital borrowing. They have recommended that we, that we go ahead and we purchase the equipment with available funds and then use the bond proceeds to, to reimburse, so. No action needed by the board, just trying to keep you in the loop on this.
Okay.
I have a question on that, Andy. I know we had spoken about it before, so we're going to, the plan was to buy all the capital items with available funds, and then we know how much we need to borrow, because we don't necessarily need to borrow the 729.
Correct.
From what I understand now, we're just borrowing the whole 729 regardless of the amount needed?
No, we'll, we'll borrow only what's needed, so.
You're going to borrow, because that's, that was one of my concerns, I didn't understand that.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll use available funds to purchase the equipment. We already know that the, by purchasing the combination sweeper catch basin unit, that will save us, I think it's 20 grand. We're still waiting for some clarity on the state budget. We had an earmark in the budget.
Yeah, I noticed it was vetoed the first time around.
And, yeah, and I was, I was trying to find it this week, and I haven't been able to get, get hold of anybody who can give me a definitive answer on it. So if we get that, then that, that's 50 grand that, that comes off what we would have to borrow, too, so.
Yeah, I think it was, it was in 75, because I actually looked up the bill appropriation, and the first time around, they vetoed it on July 15th. So I didn't know if, if it's gone back through for the second, but there was a few towns.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find out. In the list of vetoes, I didn't see it listed, so, on the, on the list that I-
Well, it's kind of on the Department of Public Safety, that bill?
Yeah.
And they just wiped out all the towns.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure if that was, that was it, or if it was going back, back around.
Right. So we'll look for some clarity on that, but, but that could affect the, the amount, but we'll end up borrowing only what we need.
Okay, good. That makes me feel better.
So 3.5 and 3.6, I think we should table until Sue's here.
I agree. I want the full board, yeah.
There is one thing I did want to share that, so that you'll have it.
Okay.
One of my goals is to discuss retiree healthcare.
Yeah, I saw that on there, yes.
And I found, oh, here it is. I found online, Ashburnham recently did this. They did, there's a article and related documentation that you can have for the-
Yep. This has been around for a long time. We actually did a study on this, right, Andy? I don't know if Colin, you ever received that?
Yeah, I did receive it. Here, Karen, if you'd like.
It was part of the union negotiations, wasn't it?
It came out of that. It came out of the final contracts that Greg Barnes negotiated before he left, that we would do a study of the, the financial impact of retiree health insurance on the town. So we did that in, I was looking at it this week, it was 2011 that we did that, so I can, I'll redistribute that.
Yeah, if you could send, it's been a long time since I read it. On your goal, is this something you want to work on towards fall or the spring, or?
My intention is for the fall.
The fall, because that only gets us a couple of months.
Right. So that's why, it's a shame that Sue can't be here tonight, so that we can discuss it.
Yeah, because I'd like the finance committee on board for this discussion, too.
Oh, right, oh, absolutely. But I did, you know, looking at this, this was a citizens petition. I would prefer that it come through the board of selectmen, and then we, you know, I know it's a tight timetable, but let's see if we can, you know, this has been kind of discussed for a long time, and we either, I think it's time for the, for town meeting to decide.
I've got no issues with that.
So.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
All righty. Let's see, skipping down to-
All right, so we'll phone this, too.
Yeah.
I would move to table 3.5 and 3.6 to, what's the date of our next meeting?
9/9.
September 9.
Okay, so, moving on. What are we at? 3.7. Review and approve auction permit for an auction to be held September 13, 2014, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
This is, just as a little bit of background, the auction statute is- This is, just as a little bit of background, the auction statute is a little, it's a little messy.
Yes, it is.
And it would, it appears that the board doesn't have to take any action on this. It appears that the auction permit is the purview of the police chief. However, I think, and...
Does it do any harm?
Doesn't do any harm. You know, it's one of those better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. So, if the board is comfortable approving the auction, Kathy Spofford has also weighed in and she'll be actually issuing the, I think she's actually issuing the paperwork, right? But if the board's comfortable with it, I don't think it does any harm to include your, your vote on this as well.
Yeah, I think the handbook said we had to, but the master of the law is kind of...
Yeah, it's really, it's odd.
But I've got no issue. Better safe than sorry. I would move to approve the auction permit for an auction to be held on September 13, 2014, from 9:00 to 4:00 PM. Do you need the auctioneer's name in the motion?
Um, yeah, I suppose so. Petrowski Auctioneers.
Petrowski Auctioneers Incorporated.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
3.8, review mandatory referral notice from the planning board related to proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw.
This is an awful lot of work. I was thrilled to see that they're working on the wind energy systems. Like I said, I got it Friday. I had so much going on this weekend, I didn't get to review it so really in depth, so I would move to say no comment at this time and then if we have any issues, we could go to the public hearing. Did you have anything of concern?
I looked at it. I didn't see anything. If you want to put it off, the hearing's not till the 22nd of September.
Okay.
So, we could carry this over to the next meeting if you want to have more time to look at it.
Well, if you reviewed it and you didn't see any issue without, some of it's just cleanup and definition stuff, but the, the wind, I'm assuming that the, the wind zoning bylaw is kind of a template that most communities are using?
Yes, yeah, I think if I recall correctly, MRPC helped them with that.
Yeah, so I, I don't have any issue. If, if you want to wait to see if Sue has any comments, that's fine with me, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I would move to table it to...
9/9.
September 9th meeting.
Second, oh, wait, table, whatever.
No motion, really.
No motion. All right, 3.9, announce 25th anniversary celebration of Atwood Acres, 66 Dudley Road on September 5, 2014, from 11:30 to 3:00 PM.
I can't believe it's been 25 years already.
Could I give you the...
No, I didn't see it. So, let's see. Atwood Acres is celebrating 25 years and they're sending an invitation out to 12 towns and folks here to join the celebration of providing safe and affordable senior disabled housing and service to the community, scheduled for Friday, September 5, 2014, from 11:30 in the morning to 3 o'clock in the afternoon, over at 66 Dudley Road.
Okay. Are you going?
Well, we have a retirement party that night, too, so...
That's it, it's during the day?
Yeah, I'll try and skip over after.
I'm going to run, I'm going to go over at some point. You going to go over, Andy?
Um, yes, I think so.
I'm sure it'll be a rockin' time. All righty.
It is nice, 25 years. I can't believe it.
Yeah, she called in today about that.
Did she?
Yeah, they're all excited about it.
Good.
3.10, review and approve contracts from, with, approved contracts with Beta Group, Inc., for preparation of a pavement management plan in the amount of $24,500 and catch basin mapping in the amount of $5,490 with all costs paid from chapter 90.
We, we approved this chapter 90 request back in the spring. The original approval was 30,000 in chapter 90. Ed went out and got some, some quotes, went with Beta Group, who's done some work. I think Beta did Lunenburg's pavement management plan. They came back in at 24.5, is that what I wrote? 24.5. And then Karen Chapman reached out to Ed and said, you know, it would be really great while they're doing that if they could, if they could get all our catch basins and drainage outfalls and other things for the...